A roll. Well, we could. It's actually not on the agenda, so I apologize for. I would like, if I could ask everyone to stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rappich.
I'm here.
Mr. Rosetti.
Present.
Rock.
Present.
McBride.
Here.
Ms. Duhae.
Here.
Myself, present, and Ms. Edgar.
Here.
Did I pronounce that right? If I could ask everyone to review the meeting minutes from our November 13th meeting. Any questions, comments, corrections, misspellings? Probably my fault.
If I may, my last name was spelled wrong. Not the first time, but we've got something on there.
You know, I could say administratively say that for the extra points that you got for catching the Pledge of Allegiance, maybe just lost those points. This is from last year. This is new year, new me. Any other questions, comments, corrections? Entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes with the corrections to commissioners do highs and ask the name. So moved.
Second.
Right. It's Mr. Rappich.
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Ms. Duhae.
Yes.
Myself, aye. Ms. Edgar.
Good to see you.
We have no old business on the agenda this evening, so I will lead right on into our new business, the adoption of the 2024 scheduling plan for planning zoning commission. Unless there are any.
I have a couple of comments.
Yeah, thank you.
May 27th is Memorial Day.
Good.
Also, October 14th is Columbus Day. And November 11th is Vulture Day.
So the only one I will say is October 14th, the village halls open for Columbus Day. So if we, if the commissioner wants to have a meeting that day, we can't because they don't want you to be.
Usually we adjust the agenda, you know, if there are any major issues with scheduling on those days. I know the village board does fairly similar. Thank you. Oh, I am okay with less meetings. What's that?
I am okay with less meetings. You're okay with what?
Less, less meetings. Fewer meetings. There are no, if there are no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting schedule as presented. I make the motion to approve the meeting schedule.
I'll say.
Mr. Rappich.
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti.
Aye.
McBride.
Aye.
Ms. Duhae.
Yes.
Myself, aye. Ms. Edgar.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is a discussion regarding, regarding these proposed text amendments to zoning ordinance. There is actually no vote required on this. This is just general open discussion. With a lot of the ongoing initiatives with the village cleaning up a lot of, I don't want to say consigal, but are they, antiquated city approaches to a lot of our planning zoning ordinances, village appeal to the rest of the world. There has been a large initiative to streamline a lot of the initiatives, very similar to our recent conversation lighting. Just bring a length, bringing a lot of those ordinances, pervige up to modern snuff as it were. Mr. Hunt, you have additional statements, discussion on this, perspectives, your own?
Yeah, so just now with this, what's in front of you regarding zoning district, staff is going to be bringing forward basically a comprehensive, comprehensive rewrite of the zoning ordinance. You know, we talked about getting consultant to do it. There's consultants that come out and we do the whole thing at once just to be more financially prudent or responsible. You know, bill staff has discussed doing this in bits and pieces. I've come not to my own horn, but I've come with a lot of zoning amendments doing in other towns. So what I believe I'm comfortable doing is with working with the planning zoning commission and those board to rewrite the zoning ordinance section by section as it makes sense. The first place I thought was the zoning districts. That's really the groundwork for all development rules, regulations. So I thought that'd be the first place to start with, you know, our work together as a planning zoning commission to first evaluate the zoning districts we have in town, which are 21 plus two land development districts, it would be 23. And that's an exorbitant number of zoning districts, you know, we see that in town. What I started off with is paring down to 12 districts. So consideration again, like Karen Locke said, if we're not zoning on anything, we're not taking any actions today. This is just step one of a probably real poor part process reevaluating the zoning districts and figuring out, okay, what are the zoning districts going to be and what are their purposes? Right now in our zoning code, the 21 zoning districts don't have any official purpose. They just say single family residents. Well, two of them say single family residents, one of them can't be family. We have four different business districts and none of them have actually adopted purposes. So that's also we probably our step one process is developing and adopt purposes for each of these districts. So if someone says that I want to rezone from R1 to R2, well, we know how to evaluate that. You know, it's not just up in the air and we're just saying, okay, sure, why not? So I can go into more details about it, but I want, you know, if you not had a chance to look over it, I would ask that you do. And I can, I can also walk us through my staff memo and my thought process of how we should proceed with this.
Excuse me. When you say that the zoning districts that we have currently don't have general purposes assigned to them, I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about because when I look at the code, it specifically states exactly what's allowed in that district.
So not the, not the land uses, but the purpose of what that district's created for. So for example, if you go to, what is it, page two of the staff memo or agenda supplement, what you'll see are these purposes that I've drafted for each of the zoning districts. Even though not the land uses that are permitted by various authorities, this is the general description of what that zoning district is for. So for example, the new E escape district is meant for low density, single family residents farming, agriculture, and other catabal uses on large unsubdivided lots. Then within that zoning code, you'll have the, you know, farming, so single family homes are allowed. Solar farms are a special use. So those are the land uses listed, but not the purpose. Because they're two distinct things.
I will see the station.
So when you go to the zoning code and you say, what is the R1 district, what is the answer? The purpose would be the answer for that.
Okay. You know, but you give me a title, basically.
Yeah.
Like the general intent, right?
Correct.
And more of a, more of a definition.
Yeah.
For clarity, curiosity, we know how many of the zoning rushes, if we were to be painting with them, how many of them are actually not even applied anywhere in the village?
So right now we have three zoning districts. I have the 21 that are not applied to any land. There are the rural residential, rural business, and recreational district. Those are defined in the zoning ordinance. There's no locks that have those applications.
So when you, when you say rural residential, is that what we're talking about PRD?
No. PRD is a planned development. Rural residential is a separate zoning district, but no property is actually settled there.
Oh, so there's no representation on our current map for those three whatsoever?
Correct.
Okay.
It's 21 districts. Probably a good thing to get out in the old bit for everyone here.
If you consolidate 21 districts down to 12, what happens to the use, permitted use definitions then?
So one thing that when we get to the land uses at exercise of this process, you'll notice that there's a lot of overlaps between the districts that consolidated. So for example, M2 and M3 have pretty much the same allowances. So it's redundant.
You weren't here for the meetings.
Yeah.
But I understand. Thank you, sir. Sorry. That's true for the venue.
And Mr. Hunt, for clarification for this process, we're just discussing this as a first step. Would we be voting on bite sized pieces or would we be discussing bite sized pieces and then voting on a wholesale amendment further down the line?
So will we vote? The smaller amendments like the lighting ordinance, you did that as small, right? Those smaller ones that are small chapters, zoning ordinance, we can do, you know, discuss and approve as a bite size. These larger ones, these zoning ones, it's going to be discussion, you know, part one, part two, part three, discuss, iron out the details, have me draft the language, and then vote. So for these bigger ones, you really, because they interplay with so many other things, you can't just approve one thing. If you just approve this, it's going to cause all issues with a bunch of other parts of the codes that we have to do in bite sized pieces because it's settling really.
Okay. So, so tonight we're just discussing the concept and then you'd go back and flesh out, you know, M, let's say, M2, M3, I've already done two. Before we vote on anything, we're going to talk about the uses.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this first step is really talking about whether the general purpose or intent is a good word for each of these zoning districts and do we think 12 is a comfortable number? We don't look at the development as a whole, you know, what type of residential developments there are, what type of industrial manufacturing developments there are, business developments, you know, the difference between getting a Walmart and a downtown restaurant, right? Those are, you don't want to necessarily put them in the same zoning district. So first step is kind of pairing out all these zoning districts and then moving on to the land uses and then the development standards.
And I, I know you included I task as a good reference point. How do we align with like an urban land institute or another kind of governing body?
So I haven't started that process yet, so that'd be part of, you know, looking at the urban land institute, what they recommend, looking at the American Planning Association, what they recommend. You know, in my experience, what's hard is that those are all good, they can be all good recommendations, but we're looking at our community specifically and how, how does that impact that? Sometimes we just take what they're recommending, it won't necessarily fit what's good for Hampshire. So it's taking those recommendations, kind of sucking them out and then applying them. But that'll be all part of the process.
I come from a world where if it isn't broken, don't fix it. It's been working for so many years, why are we, you don't have to answer this. I'm just telling you what I'm thinking. Why are we changing it? And if our current, if we're changing it just to give the zoning districts a general purpose or a title, why don't we just do that? Why don't we leave it alone, just assign general purposes to what we have?
So we're not just leaving at just general purposes. We are going to be looking at the land uses and development standards for the zoning districts as well. So part of it is, when you say it's not broken, it's not necessarily that's not broken. It's that Hampshire's a growing community. We expect to have over 2,000 homes in the next decade built plus more. So we really do need to look at our zoning districts and say, where do we really want residential areas to be? Where do we see our business commercial corridors growing? Because as a growing town, as you grow, more businesses is going to be interested in the town. So we need to figure out where we want these businesses to go and where that makes the best sense. You don't necessarily want large scale developments right next to single family residents, you know, in our town. So so it's really looking at that and trying to say, okay, then move to development standards, right? So if you do have a large scale development, next residential is looking at landscaping requirements, special requirements, and those things to make sure there's a a transition between uses as well. So it's not necessarily broken. It's that back up with glory and with growing rapidly.
What you just described to me is more of a rezoning than it is an ordinance change. You talked about.
Rezoning isn't ordinance change.
Places where we're going to allow, if you pardon?
A rezoning isn't ordinance change.
You know, in order to, that's not part of this. Would you just, you, we started out talking about changing, changing the general or assigning general purposes to what we already have or what we want to have, the 12 new districts. But then you talked about assigning zoning to areas where we want certain businesses. So you're talking about rezoning, not just.
Correct. It's, it's part of the entire process.
Yeah, because it kind of encompasses, this is only part one of the whole deal. So we're just seeing the, we're seeing the beginning tidbits of the mix of the rest of it. So it will, it will be, it essentially, it's like adopting a brand new code edition.
Adopting a what?
Adopting a brand new code edition. So currently, well, currently we're now at like 2018 for our IBC codes, right? We were previously at 2006. So it's getting that, that initial nitty gritties in place so we can have that adopted of the final code of making sure that we're meeting today's standards, what, whether it's under construction, construction bases or stuff of that nature, it's getting us to that point instead of being back where definitions were different, where things were different back when it was done previously.
Because the majority of our code and ordinances is still based in 1985, correct?
So we've had however many years of, of code changes and adoptions of ordinances to make that 1995 meet today's standards. So that's, I'm sorry, 85. So that's, that's a huge, when it comes to things changing processes, everything else, that's a huge difference. Just from my standpoint, from code enforcement, we are trying to get it, we haven't done it well in the past in the state of Illinois, but we're trying to get it to where we're adopting new codes, not every cycle, because they're on three year cycles for the codes. We're trying to get it every six years. So that way we skip one, we adopt the next one. Because what that does is like with marijuana refineries. That's not laid out in any of the codes. We have to specifically create an ordinance to make that acceptable within our codes. Whereas if we're adopting the newer codes and the latest and the greatest, if you will, those are built into those codes, so we don't have to go backwards and make a new ordinance to be able to take care of something that's already built into the code. Good explanation of what, what we're talking about. So that's, that's kind of how I see what's going on right now, is we're, we're just at the, the very first starting points of where we need to get to, to where the other parts that he's talking about that we'll get into in the per two, three, or wherever it falls. Now, I know we're only in the discussion phase, but just looking through this and, and this kind of stems a lot from some of our past meetings that we have that we're definitely going to need to look at some definitions of some of the things. Like I said, I know we're just in discussion right now, but when we're talking about large lots, what's the definition of a large lot? What's, what's the square footage for that?
Right. So that includes the development standard and we look at all regulations, lots, minimum lot sizes, setbacks, building heights, FARs, lot coverage, all those will be part. I think what I'm envisioning is that'd be like the last part of it, which is what kind of uses are allowed and just kind of decide what those bulk standards and development standards are.
Because I know, like, one of the things that we've had in the past, remote has been a, a very ambiguous term that is in, in our stuff. Well, what, what is remote? What is that definition? What is, what is that space? And I think that, that's one of the things that has spawned some stressors on determining some projects of like.
I don't, I don't think we can get rid of all the beauty.
Oh, by all means. I, I understand that completely. But some of it, I think we can, we can fine tune and, and get it to where there's not as many questions or not as many issues.
Yeah. I, I think tying it back to current standards, like, like you had mentioned, saying it's, it's kind of analogous to a building code, like looking at other regulatory bodies. I, I think having that backup for these sessions would be really, really helpful.
Just so I understand, the problem with what we have currently is that there are too many over, too much overlap, too many vagaries, and a couple just outdated things that aren't even in use. So that necessitates some consolidation, so it's not such a blunt instrument going forward, is what you're saying.
The foundation needs to be brought up to 21st century. You know, myself, being an engineer, I do think of things more of the individual parts building the entire system. You know, we're still thinking about steam based appliances and the old outlets that don't even have the ground prongs in them. And then we're trying to MacGyver modern needs and necessities into an older framework at some point. At some point, it's going to break. Yeah. You can't keep, I mean, have you not owned a store before?
We're driving a car from 1985 right now. It's time to upgrade to a new car.
Getting rid of lead and gasoline. Yeah. Been over and over. I was not fond of the door frame that they made back then. Deep into my house, I'm probably looking at it.
That would be because you hit your head on the door frame every time you go in, would it? Nothing more.
Steve, go ahead.
Just understanding these 12 different, different general definitions we're talking about here. I'm not quite familiar with a auto or an automobile oriented commercial district, what do you think behind that is? Are we thinking about more of like the sprawling auto sales or?
Right. So those are going to be your gas stations, your parking lots, it's a car repair shop. Those are unique in how they have, whether they're neighboring properties and how the developments occur. So they're not your, they're not your downtown businesses and they're also not your corridor commercial, which are those larger scale businesses. They're kind, it, the way I see it is just they're kind of their own unique kind of set of businesses and they kind of need their own set of regulations because like you said, they're sprawled vehicles. They're not like, it's not fucking out with pictures of coming for business. It's all a bit.
So what's, what's the difference between the auto versus the motorist? Because I do see on the homepage, you kind of, I doubt that there's no detail as what the motorist orientation is.
The motorist means like drivers, like these are businesses that drivers are going to stop by along the highway corridor, you know, it would be a restaurant, a hotel, you know, gas station. So the highway corridor is specific to transits on the I-90 corridor or the I-90 interchange that's in town.
Okay.
I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my head around B3 because I'm, I'm picturing State Street here. We've got a auto oriented business right next to it. And I would picture this as more of a B1 district along State Street. So would we individually just zone their property as B2 or would we strategically zone B2s interspersed with B1s?
Yeah, I think we'll strategically rezonate zone properties B3. The one for next door, I think that's going to be nonconforming use. You know, the hope is for it to become a traditional downtown use, you know, consistent with the rest of State Street. So part of this process will create nonconformities, but the, the hope is to limit those. You know, and where we do create nonconformities, we can justify why the nonconformities being created. But the business will still allow to operate as is because they're essentially grandfathered in or legal nonconforming businesses. But we want strategically B3 where we place them.
Okay. So, so more like if I'm, I'm thinking of, you know, 72 and 20, if you had a B3 on a corner, because that's a logical place for a gas station, it'd be adjacent to a B2, which would be like your more traditional strip mall.
Right.
Kind of.
Yeah.
It would be like the cycle around Casey's, what's potentially going to be gone next to it with that strip mall?
Curiosity, do we know roughly, rough number of property owners, parcels that would be affected by the six that we would be changing?
Uh, no, because we haven't really decided what it's going to be what. You know, I know we were kind of joking about it before the meeting started, was, you know, getting a zoning map that's just black and white, which just has lot lines on it and, you know, taking crayon or color pencil and start saying, okay, you know, this is going to be our one, this is our two based on existing development. You know, where do we envision, you know, down the road, any apartments or condos that may come into town, you know? So it's going to be a culinary exercise to a degree. But until we do that, we won't figure out what nonconformities are going to be created. And again, the hope is to limit those because we don't want, you know, creating nonconformities is not a best thing, but sometimes it's necessary for the future development of an area.
Thinking general purposes, general uses, I, I think this makes a lot of sense.
Anything else, Mr. Philman, Mr. Rappich? Principle that makes sense.
So what I would ask for the next step is for the planning zoning commission to review the districts that I proposed and the purpose they're going to be trying and, you know, kind of look at it like, you know, like for, what is it, B3 or the new B2, I call it corridor commercial. And I envision that along our major thoroughbys, you know, around 72, Illinois or US 20 and Allen Road potentially as, you know, another commercial corridor. Seeing as how developments occurring in town, especially there's a lot of residential just north of Allen Road. So we can see commercial occurring maybe on Allen Road. But looking at that, say, hey, you know what, I think these make sense. I think we need more sussed out. I don't think you need this. So this is really going to be a teamwork effort. It's not just me saying, hey, this is it, now vote on it. It's really working through and trying to figure out, you know, what is the best kind of orderly way to zone the community? And also looking at, you know, areas that are coming for annexation. You can't zone them legally, but we can say, hey, you know, when this comes in, it's next to residential, so it's probably residential. If it's on 10 or 72, it's going to be a commercial. So we can, we can kind of, again, work through it, work through it and figure it out.
As, as part of your efforts, are you planning on updating the strategic plan from, I think it was originally 2004 and then updated in 2008?
You're correct.
Uh, I'm not sure what that is. I'll have to look into it.
Yeah, the long-term.
All the comp plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we are going to be working, staff has talked about doing a sub area plan. Again, just due to the cost of a whole comprehensive plan, it can be very costly. And so we're talking potentially about a sub area plan that we may get a grant from CMAP or to fund that. So we're getting, you know, 72, around 20 for a sub area plan. But the goal eventually is to do a comp plan update. You don't want anything more than 15, 20 years. Even most colossal communities are going no more than 10 years now, just because of how so many things are changing. You know, offices be such a big thing. Now our office is gone, especially in suburban areas. And so, you know, and you look at your residential infill developments, you know, you're not seeing a lot of mansions being built anymore. You're seeing a lot of two story, what they call McMansions being built. So to, you know, do we want to maintain the character of our older residential areas? How do we do that? So it's, it's a long process. It's a big process, but I'm hoping to do it bite sized pieces so it makes sense and kind of see what's over there.
Additional discussion? In that case, then we've had a good starting discussion on that one. I will move on into the public comments. I believe Ms. Rappich was saying to speak first.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. I just had a chance to look a little bit at your proposal, Mr. Khan, for the rezoning. And I just had a couple of concerns I wanted to bring up. On the, on the zoning map that is in the packet, I just wanted to make sure you're aware that there's a large property that's not on the map. It was, it's a large 260-acre property north and south of Dietrich Road. It's recently been annexed and rezoned. This was done in September, I think maybe just before your, your time. But you may have heard about it. There was a lengthy process and many public hearings. A lot of us were and are concerned about how that piece of property will be developed. It's adjacent to our homes. And it was just rezoned, annexed and rezoned from farming to OM. So I wanted to just say then, I decided to take a look at the OM and how you're looking at treating that going forward. And as these guys mentioned, there's a lot of overlap with the different districts. And I just was kind of comparing what is similar to what, how, you know, what, what's going to happen with OM that makes the most sense for the village, but also from our point of view of development being close to our properties. But it looks like there was a lot of overlap between OM and OR, the Office Research District. They have things in common like permitted uses, current permitted uses, such as advertising, ABC, banking, savings and loans, business and professional offices, you know, et cetera. I think there's like seven permitted uses that OM and OR have in common. OM and the Business Districts also seem to have a lot of overlap. Group hubs, currency exchanges, daycare, health clubs, hotels, motels. There's another big chunk. It seems like the permitted uses that overlap currently in OM and M1 are more limited. And even then, they're not truly like industrial. It's more group hubs, restaurants, woodworking. So in my opinion, I, you know, when I look at it, okay, there's sort of the industrial versus the business, office research. It seemed like 21 of the 26 current permitted uses in OM are also in OR and business. And business-related, whereas only seven of the permitted uses in OM are currently in the M1. And so the common uses in OM, you know, it seems, it seems that OM is more similar to OR in how it's been written in the ordinance. And because a lot of us, you know, are looking at a current property that we live right by, we'd like to have you guys look really carefully at, you know, not just changing OM to be M1, just administratively, just like that. I hope that you'll look at these different properties and like you're saying, what's around them, what's adjacent to them. Before we don't make a, a more intensive leap. It seems like I would prefer that we make a less intensive change and then grandfather in, as you're saying, non-conformities, instead of taking a step to make a development and, and activity more industrial instead of less so. I'm also curious if there will be public hearings on any of these changes. Like I said, we attended numerous public hearings last year about a, a rezoning issue. So I'm wondering what the plan is for that. And we're also wondering if you would be notifying, you know, neighbors of properties that would be having a, a large change. Again, I think OM to M1 is a, is a big need. And then I think you mentioned a staff memo, memo about, about this. And we're just wondering if that could be made public? Or maybe, I don't know, if that was the agenda supplement, if I'm getting that confused?
To see you just.
Okay. So then, okay. All right. That was all I wanted to share. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaker, would you like to sign up next?
Evening. I gotta be honest, I'm a little confused in that whole discussion. Really a lot confused. So I, I might be talking around a little bit. But I just wanted to make sure, and some of you had already asked us, and I hope you do look into this, what other towns are actually doing in their zoning to bring it up to standard? Most cities are actually going the opposite direction, right? And I'll list off a few. So as development keeps occurring, they're finding the need to gain more and more control over their development, not less. St. Charles has 23 ordinances. Geneva has 26. Arlington Heights, 27. These are communities that I think are highly desirable for people to move businesses and families. It would seem to me that if the purpose of these decisions is to better guide future development, why would a city have less control over its zoning? It doesn't make any sense to me on any level. These changes that are written, that were shared with you and the recommendations are so extremely vague. And I know you say you're going to get into it, but like already they're asking for your opinion to give to the city board about these changes of zoning already. Like it, it just doesn't seem, it, it seems backwards, honestly. It really seems backwards. And from my perspective, and we know each other over time, and I'm sure you will hear or have heard, it seems like an end around, honestly. It seems like an end around by the city or by, it, it just is very bothersome. So like I said, I'm just so confused right now. So if it is for orderly development, which I hope it is, because it is growing, it is. Hampshire is growing and we are a community, we are a part of the community. We want Hampshire to be successful and orderly, really do. We come here to shop, we come here to eat. It doesn't actually help for future development. It actually lessens it and muddies the waters by having these less zoning ordinances. It, it makes it less ordinary. I, I just have a couple of questions and I know you can't answer, but why don't you start with the language first? If it's the language that's confusing, define what the language actually means before you figure out, okay, this thing means this, let's put it in with this. That's the muddying part is because the way the ordinances are currently written, they're muddy. Be specific in the language so everybody can be clear and say, you know what, I agree with you. That thing, business, residential, belongs with that thing. Those things belong next to this thing. And I appreciate you saying that you don't want big commercial properties next to residential. I appreciate that. Start with the language, figure out what is compatible first, not just the general overarching. And can't you just amend the use? If all it is, is really trying to come up to code, city ordinances have been around for decades and decades. When there's new uses that fit like cannabis, you just make an amendment and say, we'll add this to this business district. That's where it belongs. This seems like a lot of unnecessary work. And it's from my, from my viewpoint, and I understand that it's skewed. But when you start making a lot of connected dots, a lot of connections, coincidences cease to be coincidences. They really do. We would love to help the city grow. We would love it to be orderly. I don't know. I did, there's just so many questions. And I, hopefully you can figure this out over the nights, however long it takes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Rock. I apologize, I didn't sign up, but I did want to ask politely for some clarification on a portion of the discussion for tonight. Could I do that?
By all means, if you'd like to sign up, you can.
If there's still time.
Yeah. It's on this.
Is it okay? Okay. Thank you very much. I don't need to waste your time.
I'm off too. Kidding.
And it was a, it was a discussion that I was trying to follow to the best of my intelligence about the B2, B3 zoning change. With regards to property owners who currently operate businesses in the B2, B3 and B4 zoning classifications. If this proposed change, would this proposed change force a rezoning of their property?
Well, that's, I. That would be my understanding, depending on what was officially finally ratified, unless I'm mistaken, is there would be a list of properties, parcels that would be affected by that rezoning.
So all, again, I understand that this is just a proposal and I appreciate that you have, you know, that you were detailing that there's other steps that need to be taken. So all business owners that currently operate businesses in the B2, B3, B4 zoning classifications, their property with this proposed change would be rezoned without their request, without their request, perhaps even without their permission.
Yes.
Not even necessarily with their knowledge, other than if there's a public hearing, hopefully they'll be advised.
That I can't answer.
Maybe Mr. Viselli can.
We're not actually, we're not actually, so I don't want to get into a discussion about what might happen because I don't have a crystal ball that can see far ahead. So I can't actually speak to who would and would not be advised. I would imagine that Mr. Viselli can probably clarify that there are state laws that would require certain notifications to be made.
Okay.
But again, I couldn't speak to that because, again, this is a discussion. I don't know how far we want to get into how far in the future things might happen.
Okay. Let's just, okay, let's just stick with what's on the piece of paper. Then I apologize if I went maybe a step too far. So the businesses that are currently operating in B2, B3, B4 zoning classifications, those businesses, those property owners, their property would be rezoned to either to whatever that chart says, B1, B2. They would then be operating a business on a non-conforming piece of property. It's my understanding as a business owner, should something happen, when you're a business owner on a non-conforming piece of property, say a fire, you're not necessarily able to open that same business up if you are in non-conforming status. Now, I'm not a lawyer, Mr. Viselli, if I am misspeaking, feel free to jump in and correct me. But a question, putting Village of Hampshire business owners potentially in the position of operating a business in a non-conforming status. As a business owner, I would not want to be put in that position. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Khan, was there anyone else signed up to speak? We had three correctly. Public announcements. We all kind of. I don't even know what the word is I want to use here. We did socially meet our new planning and zoning commissioner, Ms. Sharon Egger. I think that would be my only announcement this evening is the planning and zoning commission does have a new planning and zoning commissioner due to the departure of Mr. Neal. Egger, good evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:45. Also. Repich?
Aye.
Rosetti?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Doohai?
Yes.
Myself, aye. Ms. Egger?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Happy to be here.
Happy to be here with you guys as well.
Just tired.